And I am honored to serve as the president-elect for the KNA. And I will transition to the president next month. And we want to thank all of you for attending the KNA-sponsored Town Hall in collaboration with our KNA affiliates tonight. And a special thank you to our hosting chapters and chapter chairs. We have Nightingale Chapter with Pat Calico and Southeastern Chapter with Yolanda Scal. To give you just a little bit of a background of the KNA, it was established in 1906 as the organization to establish the nursing profession, scope of practice, and standardized education for nursing. By statute, the KNA represents and speaks for 89,000 voting Kentucky nurses. We make up 53% of the healthcare workforce as well. The KNA is comprised of the KNA, which is the Kentucky Nurses Association, the KNF, Kentucky Nurses Foundation, and KNAC, which is Kentucky Nurses Action Coalition. The KNA focuses on the profession as a whole. KNF focuses on education, research, and scholarship. And KNAC focuses on workforce, including sustainability, to meet the healthcare needs of Kentucky. The KNA is responsible for promoting and protecting the professional image of nursing. And while the history of Kentucky nursing and our profession, it stands on the shoulders of the KNA. There are so many activities that the KNA supports ongoing, including legislation that supports nursing, nurses, and access to healthcare. The KNA appoints nurses to the Nursing Technical Advisory Committee, or the TAC. We provide recommendations to the governor for appointment for six seats on the Kentucky Board of Nursing. The KNA convenes and collaborates with a bold group of health-related organization affiliates. And together, we address healthcare and nursing issues. The KNA provides CE education for nursing that can be used for professional development, as well as licensure requirements. The KNA has input and impact on nursing school curriculum. We have an active PAC, or Political Action Committee. The KNA participates in workforce analysis and development. The KNA is committed to social justice and the impact of Jedi in healthcare and outcomes, as outlined in our mission, vision, and values. And since the pandemic started, the KNA has participated in health departments, or excuse me, participated with the health departments throughout Kentucky to deliver 140,000 COVID vaccines, over 12,000 COVID tests, and over 100 community listening sessions. We also responded to the tornado disaster in western Kentucky and the flood disaster in eastern Kentucky. While this list is not exhaustive of who we are and what we are about, it is a brief overview, just to let you know a little bit of information about the KNA. And on the last note, I would like to invite everyone who becomes a legislator to utilize the KNA as a resource. When you have health and healthcare questions as you are planning legislative actions, we are here for you and would be very happy to assist. Now I'm going to pass this back over to Delinor, our CEO, who will review the agenda and the flow of the evening.
Thank you, Dolores. So, we are recording on Zoom. And we will have this recording available on YouTube in about two days. We will also send you a link so that you can share it with your constituents or any other people you would like to view it on YouTube. We're going to start out by asking you all to introduce yourselves and tell us what you would like for us to know about you. But you only get one and a half minutes. Now let me tell you about that one and a half minutes. I have the mute button over here. It's akin to the hook. So after one and a half minutes, I will mute you. Sometimes I give you notice, but in the meantime, so say at about 1:10, I will put up a finger. And the finger says it's coming, the hook is coming. So at one and a half minutes, I will mute you. So after you tell us a little bit about yourselves, then we're going to review the KNA 2020 priorities. We are not quite ready to share our 2023 priorities, but we will in the very near future. In fact, in eight days. Then we will have question and answer. And we will have Dr. Stone as a moderator to help with answering, asking questions, and then Julie Denton, our lobbyist. And you know, Julie, I have to give up the new because you've been here two months now. So you can't be new anymore. And Julie's going to help us with the help of Dr. Stone in moderating and asking you all questions. Then we will have questions from the audience, if we have time. And so I'm going to ask the audience, if you would, put your questions in the Q and A. And then we will moderate those after we have asked our standard questions. So at this time, I'm going to ask you all to give us a minute and a half of your goodness. And I'm going to start with you, Chuck. Tell us who you are and a little bit about yourself.
Well, hi, I'm Chuck Eddy. I'm a Democrat running for the state senate seat in District 22, which is South Lexington, Jessamine, and Garrett County. I'm actually a born-again Democrat as of about a year and a half ago. Prior to that, I was a lifelong moderate Republican. Left the Republican Party when it was clear moderates were not welcome, when it became a hard-right party. I'm running because I want to improve things for my family and fellow Kentuckians. I'm very interested in what you all do. I've had the privilege of being served when I had a couple surgeries. I've got friends who are nurses. And I greatly respect what you do. I was particularly aware of this during the pandemic, particularly where, when I know there were people protesting against all of our restrictions that were helping out. The guy I'm running against actually sponsored early ending of the COVID-19 restrictions, which cost us about $50 million a year in federal funds, a month in federal funds because he did that. I'm fully supportive of affordable healthcare. I appreciate what you all have done throughout the pandemic. You all have just been a real blessing. As one of the ladies was saying earlier, nurses and teachers should be held in greater esteem as opposed to many times they've been jumped on unfairly. It's a real privilege to be here. I appreciate the opportunity to listen to you all and talk a little bit. I got two ears and one mouth. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Thank you very much. All right, Jennifer, would you take your minute and a half and tell us all that we need to know about you?
I am Jennifer Wheeler. I am the candidate for District 51 Marion and Taylor Counties for House Representatives. I am in my 28th year in public education in Marion County Schools, where I taught for about 15 years and then got into administration, serving in a role of dropout prevention and truancy, then moving on to be assistant principal. I'm currently the school nutrition director in our county. So when everything hit the fan in March of 20, I was the one, and people started feeding kids out of the backs of the buses and curbside and everything else. I was the one in Marion County organizing all of that. So I was one of those people on the front lines with food. And then have great respect for our nursing people who were on the front lines with the medical. Also, kind of in the last year, sort of coming in and out of the COVID stuff, I've had the pleasure and the burden of taking care of my elderly father-in-law and was in and out of the hospital with him. He had dementia, so they did allow someone to stay with him in the hospital at all times. And just had a greater understanding or a revived understanding of what our nursing staffs do to care for patients. He had excellent care in Springfield here in Lebanon. My mother is actually a retired nurse, so I always knew how much she worked. So I'm seeing the finger waving, so I'll stop.
Last but not least, Elaine Wilson-Reedy, would you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure, I'm Elaine Wilson-Reedy. I am running for the District 54, which includes Boyle and Casey Counties. I've lived in Kentucky since 1993. Came here from Charleston, South Carolina. But I'm originally from Macon, Georgia. So I've lived in several places. And sadly, I have had major surgery in each one of those places, which is a big deal when I'm talking to nurses. Because I personally have experienced just some amazing care. And the work that nurses do is just, it's really incredible. I am absolutely for accessible, affordable healthcare. It wasn't until I was in law school about 10 years ago that I even was aware of, people were saying, were asking the question, is healthcare a right or a privilege? And they asked that in my medical law class. And I thought, well, that's just kind of a dumb question. Because why would it not be a right of all people? And since then, just the awareness of how our healthcare system works and how it's based on whether you have a job or not, whether you have a job with benefits or not, and the kind of care you get. Whether we have nurses in schools is a big deal. So I am here, the finger is up. Thank you for what you all do.
Thank you, Elaine. Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I'm going to remind our attendees that they can put questions in the Q and A box. And we will address them towards the end of our session. And so I would like to introduce Dr. Eva Stone. And she's going to review the KNA 2022 priorities. Dr. Stone?
Hi, welcome, everybody. KNA members can be found in every legislative district throughout the state. As was mentioned, we're 89,000 nurses strong. Every year, the Kentucky Nurses Association works to establish priorities that represent the interest of our key stakeholders, nurses, and the communities we serve. Our membership is comprised of leaders in emergency, oncology, and critical care nursing, nursing education, business administration, primary care, school nursing, community health, and so much more. In previous legislative sessions, we have supported placing a nurse in every school, which I've already heard, yay, all day, every day. Just as nurses believe in evidence-based practice, we also believe in research-based policy implementation. We believe research shows that placing a nurse in every school will decrease misutilization of the emergency department and improve pediatric chronic disease management. And Kentucky has been at the bottom end on health measures for many, many years. Physical health, mental health, and those are all things that nurses can help to address. We know that schools with nurses have higher standardized test scores and lower dropout and truancy rates. We believe this because the latest research shows it. Although any of these factors on their own would be an excellent reason for KNA legislators to support having nurses in schools, we know that research also shows that for every dollar spent on school nursing, a cost savings of $1.20 yields an overall cost savings of $2.20. So to put that in perspective, it's as though we would be buying something for a dollar, handing the cashier a $1 bill, and getting $1.20 back along with that item that we were purchasing. And so that cost savings is something that can be helpful moving forward. In previous sessions, KNA supported increasing patient access to care through restructuring the Kappa CS requirement for those who qualify. To put this into perspective of why it's so important to nurses and to the communities that we serve, if I were to show you a map of the state of Kentucky and color the areas of the state black that were designated as a mental health provider shortage area, the entire map would be black. If I were to show you a map of Kentucky with all districts blacked out, which have a primary care provider shortage, around 84% of Kentucky would be colored black. Restructuring of the Kappa CS requirement is not a title or licensure issue. It's an access issue. It's a patient outcome issue. Data supports the safe utilization of nurse practitioners to fill the gap in our healthcare system. Nurse practitioner outcome data is not only at least equivalent in the primary care setting. Research also suggests it is less costly. Kentuckians need access to improve health outcomes. Restructuring of the Kappa CS can assist with improving access to care. And insane nurses. We have established that access to appropriate care is a priority for nurses throughout Kentucky. It's also been discussed that we believe in research-based policy solutions in order to increase access. Sexual assault nurse examiners provide essential care to victims during the most vulnerable time in their life. Research suggests that when a victim has access to a sexual assault nurse examiner, there was not only improved patient outcomes, but also significantly improved prosecution rates as well. Improved mental health outcomes translate into long-term cost savings. Increase access to sane nurses through incentive programs to ensure hospitals are able to provide sane nurse training programs can assist in providing Kentuckians with the access they so desperately need. Nurses are known as the most trusted professional in the world. Through the most difficult times in Kentucky history, nurses have risen to the occasion and have served our communities in our hospitals and in our homes. But nursing is at a point of critical crisis. Although there are nearly 89,000 nurses in the state of Kentucky, we have an estimated shortfall of 36%. Can you imagine walking into a hospital and only 2/3 of it being available and staffed? Consider the implications of this. Consider the patients who will not obtain necessary care. Think of how this impacts patient outcomes and therefore healthcare costs. Kentucky nurses support initiatives to correct the nursing crisis. We support initiatives such as faculty retention and recruitment initiatives, expanded loan forgiveness programs, a nurse emeritus program, retention programs, and creative solutions in order to attract and retain nurses to the profession. Kentuckians deserve access to nurses. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stone. Well done, well done. At this time, we would like to begin our Q and A for our panelists. And that will be moderated by Julie. You know, Julie, I did not give you an opportunity to introduce yourself, nor did I give Dr. Stone an opportunity to introduce yourself, Dr. Stone. So before we let Julie introduce, Dr. Stone, you've done such a great job. Would you introduce yourself, please?
I'm Eva Stone. I am a nurse practitioner. I manage health services for Jefferson County Public Schools. I've worked in school nursing for over 20 years. I've been in Boyle County, I've been in Lincoln County, and worked for a time in Garrett County with the Health Department. So I'm very familiar with central Kentucky. And I'm on the governmental affairs cabinet for the Kentucky Nurses Association. And I am on our School Nurse Work Group, which is a group of nurses working to help support legislation for nurses in schools.
And you've just had an appointment to the TAC?
Yes, thank you, Delinor. I've been appointed to the Nursing Technical Advisory Committee for Medicaid.
We're glad to have you. Thank you. Julie, would you do an introduction before you begin your round of questions?
Sure. First, let me offer my congratulations to Dr. Stone or my deepest sympathy. It depends on which way you feel that cuts with the job. It's a tough job. It's a tough job, but congratulations, seriously. I'm Julie Denton. And regardless of what Delinor says, I am new to the Kentucky Nurses Association. I'm on month two, and the second month's not all the way up yet either, so I'm still new. I spent 20 years in the Kentucky State Senate. 16 of those, I was chair of the Health and Welfare Committee. So I've worked with KNA for 120 years or so, but just officially now for a little less than two months. And I'm thrilled to be here. And I love all the things that you all have talked about with regard to nursing. And so if you should prevail in your race, we look forward to working with you. Pardon the background, I'm traveling, so I'm in a hotel. I don't necessarily have beds behind me when I'm on Zoom calls.
Well, what that says, Julie, is that no matter where you are, you're supporting the Kentucky Nurses Association. We really appreciate that. So if you'll go ahead and get started with our first question, that would be great.
Sure. The first question is, how do you plan to support nurses in the 2023 session? And let's start with Elaine. And you have a minute and a half, and the hook is going.
All right, watch it for the finger.
That's right.
Well, since I am not a nurse, the first thing that I would need to do would be to listen to the nurses, to what you all need. And that's my goal just overall. If it's an area that I'm unfamiliar with, you go to the experts. And the nurses are the experts. You all know what you need. You all are reasonable people. And you've laid it out, what your legislative agenda has been for this year. It sounds completely reasonable to me. The school nurses, of course. Having a sexual assault nurse examiner just makes sense. I have a theory, but I won't go into it here. And to have a shortfall of nurses in, just in Kentucky in general, is just bad for healthcare overall. Because someone is going to suffer because of that. And if it is incentives that we have to find a way to fund to bring nurses here, if it's finding a way to get them into nursing school so that they're qualified to become nurses, and maybe incentivize places where nurses don't necessarily want to live, but there's a great job there for them, that might be a way to do that. But I just, I feel like the first thing you have to do is listen to the experts and find out what they feel their needs are and see how we can listen to that and make those part of the agenda.
All right, thank you very much. And we'll do girl, boy, girls for right now. And we'll mix it up as we go, but Chuck, you're next.
Great. Well, first off, like I said earlier, you know, maybe trying to make a joke, but I really do want to listen more than I speak. I greatly appreciate what you all do. One of the main reasons I'm running is the guy that I'm running against is against medical marijuana. You guys support medical marijuana, so do I. I have a lot of veterans in my family, and we need options to opioids. Nurse practitioners, as you've emphasized, are extremely important. Back when I lived in urban Kentucky, my nurse practitioner basically saved my life by identifying something that I wasn't aware of, got an MRI or X-ray or whatever it was, and found out I had this little six-centimeter mass in the middle of my body that didn't belong there. So I greatly respect the importance of nurse practitioners. I know that there's many ways that this legislature in the last several years has not listened to the needs of the ordinary people. And I know you guys deal with the ordinary people every day. So I'm supportive of what you guys are trying to do. And that's just a phrase I use. I apologize as I'm staring at a screen full of women. What you all are trying to do there, I'll make it universal. But it's very important to me what you're doing. And one of my main reasons for running is because I want to take the no votes or the bad yes votes of my opponent and turn them into being supportive of things you want to do, teachers want to do. And I see that finger beginning to be prepared, so that's it for me.
Only with the Kentucky Nurses Association can we talk about the finger, and it's clean. Let's just establish that right now. All right, last but not least, Jennifer, how do you plan to support Kentucky nurses in the 2023 session? So I would love to see that 2023 legislative ASK paper that you all say is coming out in eight days, to be able to answer the question a little better. Because I know I'm involved in the Kentucky School Nutrition Association, and we do that same type of work of preparing an ASK paper. And like the other two said, you all are the experts in what you need. I got into this race initially because I am just very disgruntled with what our legislature has done to education and the all-out attacks the last several years. But it's not just education, it's working-class individuals in general. It's lack of support for our medical field. So I certainly support school nurses. Those have been some of my favorite people in my career. They're the people who help me identify what's wrong with my kids a lot of times. And then, like I alluded earlier, just the nurses that helped take care of my father-in-law through home health, hospice, and in the hospital. You all do an amazing job, but I need you all to tell me what you need. Thank you. And who wants to ask question number two? Will that be Dolores, maybe?
Actually, it's Dr. Stone. She's the co-moderator tonight.
Oh, she's, sorry, I missed that. Dr. Stone, I pass question number two to you.
All right, so is the nurse, the second question is, is the nursing shortage crisis a priority to you? And how do you plan to address the shortage related to retention and recruitment of nurses? And this time, we'll start with you, Chuck.
All right, I'm not muted. The nursing shortage, teacher shortage, we have so many professional shortages that are impacting, you know, basic, ordinary, everyday Kentuckians. The people at the very top of the heap, the upper class, if you will, well-to-do, aren't experiencing this because they are able to go to places where they don't see that. I've found that the tone of the legislature the last few years has been problematic. I think that incentives are a good idea, but I think one of the main things, and this comes back to public education also. As a legislator, I respect what you all do, and I respect you. And we need to communicate that. Too often, we hear of the legislature talking down to the various groups, such as you and teachers and all that. And I keep coming back to teachers as well, and I apologize because I'm actually, I'm part of the AFT 120 Union. I'm a, and very supportive of public education. But what I see happening with both nurses and the teachers, we do need to incentivize. We need to make sure that they are given the tools they need. And we also need to make sure that they're not attacked. There's that finger. And I know that's a very brief and half-assed answer, and I apologize for that.
Thank you, Chuck. Jennifer, how about you?
So like Chuck said, incentives is one way. But education and nursing are very similar in there. It's scary, the shortages. It's scary to think that when I go to my doctor's office, there might not be enough nurses there to move people through quickly or in a timely manner. But more scary than that is the local emergency room and what happens when you go in there at 10 o'clock at night. But beyond incentives, we've got to start teaching our children, educating our children from a young age that these are admirable professions. One thing that I love in our school district, we have an area tech center on our campus. We've got students that move fluidly through Marion County High School and Marion County Area Tech Center throughout the day. And one of our greatest programs is our pre-nursing program. We have young adults come out of that program with their CNA, ready to go, work in nursing homes, work as nurse's aides in hospitals, doctor's offices, wherever they're needed. All that does is gets them a leg up to start into that education, that nursing education program. And we need to make that more of an enormous, getting our young people prepared to go into professions and showing them what those professions can offer them. So that's a long term, I realize, but none of these problems can be fixed in a day, a year. They're all going to be long-term solutions.
Thank you, Jennifer. I'm Elaine.
So I will just reiterate what my two colleagues just said. You know, one of the things that I know that goes hand in hand by creating any sort of successful profession is having very high-quality public education. If they're not graduating from high school with the skills that they need to move on, then we are losing potential professionals even before they get out of high school. So we've got to strengthen our public education system. We have to. We have got to get, like Jennifer said, we've got to get more trade, I hate to call it trade, alternatives to college. Every single kid does not need to go to college. Every single kid does not need to go to Harvard or even UK, unless they already have an idea of what it is they plan to do. These pre-nursing courses are amazing. The allied health classes that are offered in high schools really help students know whether this is something that they're going to maybe want to pursue or make them realize that maybe this is not their area. So that's a way to get started, maybe.
So that's a way to get started, maybe light the fire and the spark. I know that when you talk about job retention, it isn't always about money. A lot of times it's about the conditions people work under, the number of hours that they have to work, the type of pressure that they're under. A lot of that can be alleviated just by having more nurses in the system. So you don't have to work as many hours and you don't have that stress of worrying that you're at the end of an extremely long shift. And did I make a mistake that I can't come back from? So, um, you know, those are, those are just some initial ideas. But of course you all know what it would take for you to, to want to be retained. So that would be something that I would want to hear.
Thank you, Elaine, and, and very good points. Uh, I, I keep hearing the theme of education as it connects to, um, health and it, it does all connect. Yeah. Kids have to be healthy to learn. But they have to learn to be healthy moving forward in their life, in their lives. So thank you all for your points and I'll hand it back to you, Julie.
Thank you, Dr. Stone. This third question is, what would you like to see as a priority for Kentucky nurses? And I'll start this time with Elaine.
Well. You're talking about legislative priorities or just in general? Can you clarify that just a little bit for me?
Delinor, you want to qualify that because I'm afraid.
Can I reclaim my time? That's the other thing. Can I reclaim?
Okay, okay, okay. I'm, I'm reclaiming the time. Well, I, I would like to clarify because we would like to know about what you think we, we should have as a priority legislatively and otherwise. Because we are involved in so many areas. Legislation and advocacy is one of the many things that we do. We also are about education. Uh, we, as you know, nurses need to relicenter, re-license every year. And they must have 14 hours of CE. Other things have to do with our priorities in terms of addressing social justice, equity and inclusion. So there are a lot of opportunities for nurses to impact the health of Kentuckians.
Great. Thank you. That really helped me a lot. Um, I did not realize that, that nurses have to re-license every year. 14 hours of CE sounds like a lot to me. Um, on top of all, it's not. Okay. It sounds like a lot to me. You know, I, I, I'm, I'm going to be perfectly candid with you. I don't know what the priorities should be unless you all explain to me what your priorities are. You know, I can come up with a bunch of stuff and I can talk until the finger comes up, but, um, there's no point in, in wasting your time. But I will tell you that I am a listener. And that's what I need. I will need that information from you all so that I can know what the priorities need to be from those who are active in the profession and who are the advocates for that profession. So, uh, that's, I'm, I'm just going to be really honest with you there. So.
Thank you, Elaine. Appreciate that. Jennifer?
So just listening to your all's paper, Ask for 22 and your questions so far. I'm like Elaine, I want to, want to hear from you all what you think. But then too, I think growing your profession, reaching out, finding young nurses to come in behind you and, and take on the field, take on the charge. You know, that is definitely a priority. And then I like to see our, all of our professionals, but our nurses. When I'm talking with you all, out in the field, being vis- not in the nursing field, but out in the community, being visible with, you know, your T-shirt on, your hat on, your whatever that says, hey, I'm a nurse and, and these are the things that, that I want to do to promote my profession and, and get some of that respect back that the nurses give back to the community, the nurses are available to answer questions. Like I said earlier, I love our school nurses because they're not just in our school system. They're not just the nurse that, that goes and takes the kid's temperature and, and does the triage to keep them from going to the doctor's office, the emergency room. They're also in the classrooms doing some health education, doing, you know, some of those quick hit education things that nutrition education, that's so important that, that needs to come from a professional. And, and yes, our health, health ed teachers are great in our school districts. But there are some things that, that it needs to come from a medical professional, not someone who had two or three hours in a class at some point on that, that area.
Great. Thank you. And I will turn it back over to Delinor to see if we have questions. Oh, I'm sorry, Chuck, last but definitely not least. He's, hasn't sung a song for us yet, so he doesn't get to answer the question. Is that what you're saying, Delinor? Don't make the rest of us look bad, I'm afraid. I'm sorry, Chuck.
I withdraw my song. It, it's very, it's very interesting because one of the main reasons that I'm in this is the medical marijuana issue, which my opponent, a pain doctor opposes, which I can't wrap my mind around. You all supporting that and helping that move towards approval. I was very pleased it passed in the state house last year, 57 to 34. I still don't understand why seven legislators didn't vote. You know, if I go to the legislature, you're not going to find my name next to didn't vote. I have an opinion. I'm going to solicit information so I form a good opinion, particularly in, in this area and many areas. But you're not going to see me avoiding the vote. I'm not going to do that. One of the things we learned during the pandemic is there's an awful lot of people with a lot of knowledge after having spent 20 minutes on the internet. And that's pretty scary. Um, I greatly respect what you all went through and what you all did for the rest of us. I, I can't thank you enough for how you kept us alive and kept us safer. I fought hard against Andrew Cooper Rider, the brood guy who tried to get Andy Beshear impeached because he didn't like COVID restrictions. He cared more about his profits. I found that those COVID deniers and COVID mitigation deniers were, were quite offensive and quite harmful to our state. So one of the things that I want to assist you all with doing is fighting back, but a- against bad legislation. We are not going to have enough Democrats to defeat uh, what the Republican super majority wants to do, but we can communicate. And I do thank you for that finger.
Thank you. And I see there is a question in the queue. And so, Dr. Stone, would you like to take that?
Sure. So the question is, um, how do you plan on addressing the sexual assault nurse examiner or sane nurse shortage? And Chuck will start with you this time.
And without a song, um, sexual assault is a big concern of mine. That's one of the reasons that I'm opposing the second constitutional amendment. Um, my daughter's 37. She had her son 10 years ago and the process of the birth means that if she had another, uh, birth, it could be fatal for her. Um, she and her husband had decided not to have other kids. That doesn't mean she couldn't be assaulted on the street. So I think it's very important that we do fund that area. I'll be honest, I don't know enough about it to be able to say properly what should be done, except to say it, it sounds like something would be very, very important to have. And I apologize that I don't have more knowledge about that. But again, that goes back to the two ears and one mouth.
Dr. Stone, would you share some information about our views on sane nurses? So that, um, the candidates can have our understanding of why we were supporting sane nurses?
Yes. So a, a lot of the issue is that, and Chuck, I'm sorry that I didn't read this for you or, or kind of review this again, but we, we don't have enough sane nurses a- around the state. Part of the issue is there's a cost associated with, um, training and, and maintaining that specialized certification. And so there's not set requirements, um, for places. And so we don't have enough of those in place. We don't have access, equal access across the whole state. A lot of times women would have to travel to have access to that. Uh, it, it goes back to the issues we've been discussing with support for funding those things, ensuring access across the whole state and, and promoting equity, quite frankly. Because you shouldn't, just because you live in one county in Kentucky, doesn't mean you should have access to something that another county does not.
Can I ask a question real quickly, just maybe to help clarify this a little bit more? How long does it take? What are the requirements to become certified in this area? Just if you could just kind of give us an idea of what that takes.
Uh, Dr. Stone, before you answer, I want to say that for the entire state, we have approximately 353 sane nurses for the entire state. Dr. Stone, is it a, it's a 10-week course? Is that correct?
You know, I don't sure the length of the course. I know that, that cost is one of the things we've discussed is one of the biggest barriers. And, and then nurses getting released, uh, time away from work to attend this training because that's two weeks that they're not in a facility. And then, of course, when nurses are pulled to do this type of exam, a lot of times they have to take call because they're called into the hospital, uh, when these victims come in. And so that's, that's, there's a cost associated with payment for the, the staffing to do that. And, um, and it takes them away from the bedside. Um, and so those are a- all the types of things that come into play.
May I make a comment?
Yes, I think that's only fair since we gave some additional information, Chuck.
Thank you. Um, uh, when you said there's only 353 of these nurses in the state, that's pretty startling. It's similarly startling to 79 of our counties not having an OBGYN. One of the things we've got in Kentucky is we've got amazing people and so far we've not expended the resources we need to. So as a legislator, one of the things I want to do is, is support that. And I think we have to set a goal to say we need to grow from 353 to 400 or 450, whatever we need. And to help provide some funds for that, we have a $2 billion rainy day fund. I don't know about you all, but it's been raining a lot the last couple of years. I don't know why we have that much there. Anyway. But thank you very much for clarifying that. Um, I've assumed that every nurse I met was sane. Now I understand a little better what I say nurses.
Oh my, oh my, oh my, oh my.
Elaine.
So, golly, this is, um, this is a huge issue for so, so, so many reasons. It would seem like optimal would be to have one sane certified nurse on each shift in every emergency department. Does that sound? I mean, like, you know, in a perfect world, if we could snap our fingers, is that really kind of what ultimately we would like? What do other states do? Is there, is there a model that, that we can look at? Preferably one that has a better track record than Kentucky for healthcare. Um, and one that has a better track record than Kentucky of taking care of women and women's health and women's rights. But I, I honestly did not know that there was a sexual assault nursing examiner certification. And now that I know that that exists, how can we not have this? I, I, I just, I, I can't imagine, I can't imagine to go through the trauma of being sexually assaulted and that violence. And then to, to not know how to go through that process. And, um, Dr. Stone, I think that you were the one who said, um, that when there is a sane nurse that, uh, the prosecution rates are improved?
Yes, because they are able to collect evidence that is often lost when, when a victim is not seen by a nurse or a trained person to collect that evidence.
Yeah, I would definitely, I, I see the finger. I, I definitely support having more of these and what, whatever obstacles the legislature can, can help overcome, whether it's the price or, um, maybe closer in certification classes or more certification classes to make them more available. But that is definitely something that I, I definitely support.
Thank you. And Jennifer?
Like my colleagues, I hadn't heard that terminology before. I didn't know that was even really a thing. I knew that if a woman was raped or sexually assaulted, that there was an exam potentially done at the, the hospital. But I didn't know that there was a potential for a sane nurse per se. So I would agree with Elaine. It seems only reasonable that every ER in the state would have one per shift or at least one or two that they can call in for shift. You know, how we get there, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think that, I'm sure there should be some way of creating some funding to allow that. But that goes back to growing your program. If you're having to take a nurse off the floor to go train for that and you're already short-staffed, then what does that do to your team? So I see both sides of that coin, but I agree with my colleagues. That's something that really needs to be taken care of. So, you know, again, you're all's leadership on that is needed.
May I ask a question?
Your finger's up now.
I ask a question?
Yes. Yes.
If we have 353 sane nurses now, uh, as Eileen, Elaine asked, how many would we need to have one on each shift, as she said, in emergency rooms?
I, I don't have an answer, but I think that the idea that we would do some research with other states and also with areas where they need those sane nurses to find out what is the optimal number. But I can tell you, but 353 is not it.
I understand. Thank you.
And I have a follow-up question on that also. So are those 353 located mostly around our larger cities or are they spread out a little bit?
That's a good question. I don't have an answer for you on that. Dr. Stone, do you have an answer?
Well, uh, uh, they are more accessible in larger areas because the legislative ask that we've had historically is, is to increase a hospital capacity to provide training for these nurses. So, uh, you know, if we wanted to get to the goal of one available for every ER, you know, the size of the hospital or, and, and they have data that would show how often victims were brought to their particular emergency rooms. But what, what we want to make sure is there's enough resources to allow them to have training programs so that they can have nurses who would be available um, where these examinations need to be done.
You, your finger has been up an awful lot, Chuck.
I'll use the left finger. My, my que- my question is, or comment, it seems to me that in the rural areas, we have I'm anticipating as much problem with rape and assault as we do in the urban areas. And yet they're the ones who are most likely underserved. It would make sense to me if more people were aware that there was a sane, um, certified person in a facility uh, in an area that more people might come forward. Because right now, I know so many girls and women who just aren't going to go through the trauma because whoever's going to take care of them is not trained properly. This could, this could be a game changer in my opinion in terms of particularly helping the rural girls and women be more properly cared for. And, and, and that's just, just a comment. And I apologize for my finger.
Okay, um, at this time, I think, uh, Dolores, there was a comment, um, that was in the Q and A that you wanted to answer. That had to do with the role of KNA. What does KNA do?
Well, I can do that. I answered it to the person independently.
Oh, okay. Well, I thought you might want to answer it for everyone because we have quite a few people on as attendees who may not know what KNA does.
Okay, I can do that. Um, I just reiterated that the KNA encompasses the KNA, KNF and KNAC. And that we are the only full-service professional organization for the entire state's nursing population. In addition to promoting the essential. In addition to promoting the essential role of registered nurses in the healthcare delivery system, the KNA is an advocate for the quality patient care in all settings, from the halls of Frankfurt to the state agencies to boardrooms, hospitals, and healthcare facilities. The KNA is the strong voice for the nursing profession throughout the Commonwealth. Our mission is for advocating for, educating, excuse me, engaging with and advancing the professional practice of nursing through leadership development, evidence-based practice, education, research, and membership growth. And our voice, our vision is to be the voice for nurses for a healthier Kentucky. And then through these actions, we promote quality healthcare, we strengthen awareness and healthcare issues, and direct healthy promotion for leading improved healthcare outcomes in our state. That's very briefly what we do.
Thank you, Dolores. I wanted to ask, since we have a few more minutes, I wanted to ask a question that we've had at a couple of the other candidate forums. And, and that is, what is your position on addressing workplace violence? As you will know, workplace violence, especially in healthcare organizations, is increasing. And while the focus in many areas is on hospitals, workplace violence takes place wherever healthcare workers work, but primarily wherever nurses work. And so I'm going to start with you, Jennifer. I'm going to give you the first crack on that of what you would do to help us address workplace violence.
I'm, I'm sorry, I had somebody rattling stuffs in the background. So, you know, just like anything else where there's violence, that's, that should not be tolerated. And there should be some type of statute in every workplace that, that deals with those things and protects their staff, their employees. Regardless of what that statute is, it needs to be posted and, and enforced. And there's where we miss the ball a lot of times is on the enforcement of whatever our rules, our regulations are. But by all means, our nurses, our medical staff needs to be protected. And like somebody alluded earlier, this last two years with COVID and, and then the, the non-believers has just shown how vulnerable that our medical staff can be with just a few people going rogue. So there does definitely need to be ways of protection. That's going to be different in every facility and the way those facilities are set up. You know, I know in our local hospital, when you go in now, that you can get in and you can get to certain places, but then there's doors and you got to be buzzed in to other places and you got to identify who you are, much like going into a school. And I know that people think, well, that shouldn't be necessary. But in this day and age and in our world, maybe that is more necessary than we want to think that, that people need to be buzzed in to get into secure locations.
Okay, Chuck, what ideas do you have?
You know, it's very interesting. You talk about, you know, workplace violence. I think that one of the things we need to have, and that may be through legislation, that may just be through encouragement, is to have no-fault reporting. Because a lot of the workplace violence may be happening outside of other people's view. It's private. So I think that there should be some no-fault methods, kind of like, I guess, an IEP type of thing, where you can, you can report something like that. And it may involve the state putting something like that together. But I think it's important, I mean, so many times you've got the supervisor versus some of you supervised workplace misbehavior. And, and we've got to be able to get past that. And that, that has to do with some, you know, I, I think no-fault reporting type of thing. And there's also got to be, and this is, like Jennifer said, this may be where we get more involved. You know, there's got to be some solid penalties more to reduce this and, and prevent this. Well, not prevent it, obviously, but to reduce it and discourage it. Because I think a lot of people feel they could kind of get away with things, particularly during the last two years. It's, it's like the, the decency factor has evaporated in some people's behavior.
Thank you. Elaine? What can you do?
Well, I am a superwoman. So I, I think that, and, and you all, please correct me if, if I'm going on the wrong tangent, but I think that a lot of the workplace violence occurs because we have a very severe lack of mental health resources. In my mind, I'm thinking of patients who have just gotten to the end of their rope and they lash out at their nurse or their CNA or, you know, whoever the person is in the room with them, much like students do that with teachers. And that violence is, is, it's manifested somewhere from inside. And so if we have better access to, I think, mental health resources, starting when, when kids are young, same, I don't know, maybe have a nurse in every school that can maybe talk to a kid. I don't know, it's just an idea. But also, we just, we need to work more so that it's not always it's, it's not always that we have to punish the person who commits the violent. It's figuring out what it was that started it to begin with and find a way to treat that so that it's not habitual. Because I would imagine that in hospitals, you all get probably, especially in the emergency departments, you get the same people every time because they are not on their meds, because they haven't had that treatment that they need, because they're not seeing their therapist or their counselor. Or, you know, maybe they were in jail and now they're off their meds and they can't, their brain just isn't functioning the way that it needs to. So I don't, I, I'm kind of taking a different tact from, from, from Chuck and Jennifer. But I, I just think that, that's just one of the things that, that we do very poorly in our society in general is addressing the mental health challenges that we have and the things that cause them. And then you end up with grownups that don't know how to handle their emotions and they don't understand how to handle stress and frustration. And they take it out in a violent manner instead of just, you know, having a way to deal with it. So that might not be at all what you, you were looking for, but that's kind of my novice thought. Thanks for the finger.
Thank you all. Jennifer, did you have something you wanted to add? You're on mute, by the way. You're on mute, Jennifer.
Sorry. We live in a society where, and in a state where we have rules that protect officials at high school ballgames. Why we can't come up with ways to protect our healthcare professionals is beyond me. If we can protect our, our basketball officials, our football officials, our softball, baseball officials. So, so that is very doable. It's just we have to find an answer.
I, I mean, I don't want an answer because it's not fair, but I just want to throw out, what's different about the nursing profession and the profession that you've, the professions that you have just described? So, Dr. Stone?
Yes. Okay. How do you envision working with the Kentucky Nurses Association and nurses across the state to improve health equity in Kentucky? Chuck, we'll start with you.
Uh, thank you. As a politician, I need to say thank you for that question. I think, I think it starts out with having a respect for nurses and your profession and your organization, which I do. In terms of the specifics of, of how to work, when it's, when it's an issue that I really need to learn about, I'm going to turn to you to, to ask for your thoughts and your opinions. And also as well as asking, you know, my friends who are nurses, you know, whether they be in Prestonsburg or whether they be in Lexington or wherever. So I, I guess that's, that's, that's the way that, that I would interact. I don't have any magic bullet or anything like that. But listening and, and responding, I feel like there hasn't been a lot of listening by many of the legislators currently. I don't see how, how they can be. I mean, they passed a bill to make it harder for, you know, working for and marginalized Kentuckians to get benefits. They, they wanted to increase the looking for fraud. And Dr. Eric Freeland just said that would cost about $25 million, which you haven't given us. And you're not really going to find that much fraud. You just made it, it was a cruel bill, basically. And one I might add that my opponent voted for. So I guess circling back around is listening for those issues where it's, where it's important for you. I don't want to try to make up something that just, so it will sound flowery. Listening, I guess, is the best thing I can do.
Thank you. Elaine?
Yeah, and I, I agree with Chuck. You know, we have to listen to the experts to know how to solve some of these problems. And I would suspect that healthcare equity looks different in Louisville than it looks in Harlan. And so we would need to make sure that we understand what the people in the area, in the geographic area, what they're, what they need. We have to understand their culture to make sure that we do this in a way that's respectful and, and allows people to maintain their dignity. But we have a lot of people who have little to no access to healthcare unless they go to the emergency room. And that's, that should not be the front line of taking care of non-emergencies because we don't have access to a primary care physician or we don't have a walk-in clinic that we can go to, to take care of our strep throat. So, you know, if, if there's a way maybe to, to tap into that rainy day fund to help incentivize building and staffing these types of programs. My, my husband is on the city commission here in Danville. And I know that it's amazing that the money that can be forgiven, tax incentives for building different kinds of businesses and industries and bringing those types of things in. Why can we not also do this for our healthcare areas? I think it's a matter of priorities. It's a matter of who's making the money and who's making the decisions. But healthcare should not be based on who has the money. It should be based on where is the need and how can we meet that?
Thank you. Jennifer?
So, followed up with what Chuck said, being willing to listen, bringing parties to the table. We, as a society, have gotten away from being willing to listen to our neighbor and talk to our neighbor and listening to different viewpoints because we're not all always going to agree on everything. But we've got to find a way to sit down at the table and work through everything to figure out what's best for all people. Following up on what Elaine said with finding ways to provide healthcare, adequate healthcare to all of our citizens across the state. You know, one of the things that just blows my mind is the cost of medicines, some medicines. And those medicines seem to be the ones that are primarily for our elderly or for our most vulnerable, you know, our children, our elderly. You know, insulin is one example. EpiPens is another that, that we've got to find ways. Part of that equity is nurses in every school across the state will help take care of our children. But then providing good healthcare in those rural areas for everybody. That walk-in clinic, like Elaine said, that where everybody can go. And not only that, I know there are models where there were sometimes vans of for breast exams go out. There's different things that go out to other areas that, you know, maybe if it's not where you can set up a, a clinic all the time, you can set up pop-ups where they come in once a week. Here in Lebanon, one of our greatest things with our
Jennifer, thank you. I've only had to do it one time today. Well, it's because you have so much to say and you have such, so much passion and we really do appreciate that. So at this time, I, I am going to say thank you all for joining us. And I'm going to ask Dolores White, our president-elect, to give us some closing remarks. And also to discuss our Leadership and Legislative Academy awards and conference, president-elect.
Okay, I can do that. So I'll talk, start with our Legislative Academy. It is an academy for nurses to attend. It, we are taking applications currently. And it starts November, in November, I believe, the first. And it will be three weeks of content where we will review leadership content and three weeks of where we will review legislative content. So it's a great review and wonderful speakers will be attending. And then after that, you have the opportunity to mentor, or excuse me, be with a mentor. You'll shadow someone that's either in a leadership position or is a legislator. So it's truly a fabulous opportunity if you can do that. The applications are due tomorrow. So please consider doing that. It's a, it really is a great opportunity. Our business meeting is coming up the end of October. And we have the opportunity for you to nominate fellow nurses and citizens for the awards. We have Citizen of the Year, Nurse of the Year, Researcher of the Year, Student of the Year, and our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Champion. So think of nurses and then for the citizen, it can be a non-nurse as well as a Volunteer of the Year as well. And think of people that you know that are doing great things and nominate them for the awards so that they can be recognized for the great work that they do. I'm sorry, was there a third thing you wanted me to talk about, Eleanor?
The conference.
Oh, the conference. Our conference coming up is in November. It's November 3rd and 4th. It's half-day each day and it's a wonderful opportunity to network and hear wonderful information. Our topic is, our conference theme is People, Purpose, and Passion: A World of Opportunity. And we have excellent speakers lined up and we hope that you'll be able to attend that. It is going to be virtual. And again, a wonderful opportunity to be together and learn additional information. So, and then I'll just close up here. I want to thank everybody for attending tonight. Thank you to the candidates for sharing information about you and spending your evening with us as well as sharing your thoughts about nursing issues and priorities. We truly appreciate your support. Thank you to those who attended to hear from the candidates as well as to ask questions of concerns that you have. Truly was an informative night and we appreciate everybody being here and we hope you have a wonderful rest of your evening. Bye-bye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.